Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually. But the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county from a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition. So this dog's own set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunity to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain. It's bigger than the city, actually. But the houses are kind of sporadic. It's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county from a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418...
Commissioners, court has reconvened into regular open session. Item number 23 postponed December 6, 2021. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding litigation styled Alicia Lopez Mora versus the county of El Paso, Texas et al., cause number 2021 D C B 1566, county attorney case number 010821 L D.
Are we back on? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, okay, for item... Yes, so for item number 23, my understanding is the... Based on the discussion in executive session, it would be to deny the request for settlement. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 24 postponed December 6, 2021. Discuss and take appropriate action on subrogation claim regarding Martín Salazar, county attorney file number 017221 P C.
So based on the discussion in executive session, the motion would be to accept the settlement offer on the subrogation claim and to sign the paperwork needed to effectuate the settlement agreement. So moved.
Second.
And to authorize a county judge to sign the paperwork needed for the settlement. We just add that. Thank you.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Stout is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 25, discuss and take appropriate action regarding pending litigation styled April Cadena versus El Paso County et al., county attorney's file number 013116 L D.
For item number 25, the action would be based on the discussion in executive session as to authorize a county judge to sign the settlement release pursuant to the settlement terms as discussed in executive session.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 26, discuss and take appropriate action regarding pending litigation styled Noé de Jesús Ortiz Villagrán versus county of El Paso et al., cause number 319 C B 00336 D C G, county attorney's file number 026119 L D.
Yes, and for this item, based on the discussion in executive session, the proposed motion would be to authorize a county judge to sign the settlement release pursuant to the settlement terms as discussed in executive session. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. That completes this course of items, Judge. We do have items pending for after lunch.
Yes, if we could be back by 1:15, because we had told them 1:00, and I wouldn't want to push it too far away from 1:00 o'clock. So if we could be back at 1:15.
Okay. Commissioners, court will recess until 1:15 p.m. It is 12:40 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy lunch.
But we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county.
It's a baby, right?
It's my pet, it's a month, two weeks.
From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Ericko takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster facility of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs don't sit food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Ericko drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelor's, 74 master's, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Good afternoon. Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. It's 1:25 PM. Item number eight from Commissioners Court postponed December 6, 2021. Discuss and take appropriate action to renew the emergency ambulance service agreement with Life Ambulance Service Incorporated.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, you want to go ahead and introduce this item?
Yes, Life Ambulance have been a longstanding provider for service in this community. Based on our contract and the latitude that we have, proposing that we exercise the option that's on the contract as far as they have three one-year options on the contract. So I propose that we exercise those options. I believe it being the message of our community that we do it at this time, and I believe that the representative from the agency is available for comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. And you want to put this in perspective, Betsy, on where we are in our process?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Good afternoon, Judge Commissioners. Last year, the court asked that we look at going out for an RFP for ambulance services. But our current agreement does allow for a one-year extension of the existing agreement. So if it's the pleasure of the court to extend, as Commissioner Robinson is recommending, we'll work with that. We'll work to bring back that one-year amendment to exercise under the current agreement, and then we'll work on an RFP for the following year.
Okay. Commissioners, what your thoughts on that? Commissioner Stone, are we okay with that?
I think it's fine.
Yeah. Hey, Rachel.
Good afternoon, County Judge and Commissioners. I'm Rachel Heraxing, President of Life Ambulance. We're grateful for the year extension, and, you know, we're here to service our community. We love what we do, and we appreciate it. Do you have any questions for me, anything that we can address at this time?
Well, just that you're comfortable with that extension, but we will be going into an RFP right after at this time?
The RFP would be for award after this year.
After this year?
Yes, sir. And I do want to note, Judge, we have a great relationship with Rachel and the team.
That we understand, so.
They've been very responsive. The equipment they have is, you're always replacing it. You've maintained the training level of your employees. So I've had very good reports on the Life Ambulance.
And the contract does allow, just want to say, for three-year, I mean, three individual year extensions, so.
Well, why don't you bring it back up, and then we'll review that, and then we'll make a determination on whether or not we would go out for another?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'll make a second to Commissioner Robinson's request.
Sure.
And if I could just make it clear for the record so that we understand. So the agreement, so right now, the current term of the agreement is until January 31st, 2022. So it means, based on what you all have expressed today, that the new term will be February 1st, 2022, through January 31st, 2023. That'll be the one-year term, under the same terms and conditions as the original agreement.
That's correct.
That would be your action. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina, for clarifying that. Thank you. Go ahead, Caesar.
Commissioner Alguín.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stone.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Betsa Maniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Representative Fierro came right in at the right time, right moment. But we've completed, and so thank you, Rachel.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it, and really glad to continue to service you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Item number 10, County Administration postponed from December 6, 2021. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the interlocal agreement by and between El Paso County and Housing Opportunity Management Enterprises regarding operations in El Paso County. Contract number 2021-0948.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Joel Bishop with County Administration. So we are picking up where we left off from your approval to start negotiations on a contract or memorandum of understanding with Home. And that's what you have before you today. You have an interlocal agreement that details the conditions that we negotiated with county staff, county attorney's office, and Home for your consideration. I know there's members of the public here in Home, representatives of Home that may want to offer their feedback, answer questions if you have any. And also Christina Sanchez is going to articulate a bit more about some of the key negotiation points in the contract. I'll go ahead and turn it over to her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Good afternoon, County Judge, Commissioners, Commissioner Robinson, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. And just to do a very quick recap for the court of where we are. So back on November 8th, the Commissioners Court did take action to approve two resolutions. One of those resolutions felt a need exists in El Paso County for affordable housing and better housing opportunities to those low-income individuals and families, and it also furthers the basic needs of El Paso County residents. So that was the finding by the court that there was a need in the county. So that action has been taken. There was a second resolution that authorized operation of Home in the county conditioned on the negotiation of an interlocal agreement that provided that veto authority to the Commissioners Court prior to the submission of a final application for the tax credit project located in the county area, or provided that any project, I believe, had gotten approved before then. So those resolutions are only for any new project submitted, excuse me, on or before January 1st, 2024. Again, those were the actions that you all took on November the 8th. So fast forward to today. So today, we have an interlocal agreement. It's been posted on your backup in draft form as to what we had worked through. It's very important, though, for the purposes of today, that we get two items cleared up for the court. And these two items are policy-based. So I couldn't make those decisions to incorporate and to finalize into this agreement until we got some clarity from the Commissioners Court on what you want to do with that. And so that's why we're here today, to make sure that we can iron that out. And of course, Homes representatives are here today, so there will be a portion where I'd like to turn it over to them to kind of give their opportunity to explain their reasons why they're here, and they better can articulate those points than I can to this Commissioners Court. And so the first item that I'd like some clarification on for the purposes of this interlocal agreement is that specifically on the projects that are subject to the veto authority by the housing authority. So again, the focus on the discussion at the November 8th Commissioners Court meeting was primarily focused on the tax credit projects. This is the one in which the application is due pretty soon, and it would be for the multimillion-dollar project that Home is interested in pursuing. As proposed, and as proposed in your backup in terms of the draft interlocal agreement, it's drafted to have the Commissioners Court have veto approval prior to the submission of the final application for that federal low-income housing tax credit or housing tax credit programs, not any other housing projects that are not tax credit-based. So I wanted to make sure and to make sure that that was clear. Now, again, per the interlocal agreement, the veto approval would work as follows. There'd be a written description that Home would be required to provide and present to the Commissioners Court prior to the submission of a final application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. This is the state agency, TDHCA. There would have to be a written description of the project, which would include the applicant for the low-income housing tax credit, or the LIHTCs. That's reflected in your agreement. So would have detailed information, again, specifically on that tax credit project. I am seeking, again, the court's guidance and feedback to confirm whether or not it was your intention to have authority over any other non-tax credit-based projects, or just that tax credit-based projects. Again, I wanted to make it clear that right now, as drafted, it's only for tax credit projects. When I did speak to Home, and I don't want to speak for them, but I just want to do a very quick recap of at least what they had mentioned to me, is that at this time, there's no plans underway right now to pursue any other non-tax credit-based projects. However, it doesn't mean that that would not be the case any time in the near future, within the next three years, in which, you know, any other projects would come before the court. And so I wanted to, again, put this before the Commissioners Court, and to see what your thoughts were, what you all want to do, and then, of course, give Home the opportunity to provide some feedback on that. So at this time, would you like to hear from Home, or would you like to have some discussion over that point?
No, we'd like to hear from Home, just to make sure, what is it that, we know what's on the table, but we want to see what they agree or don't agree with these items.
Are there, there's?
There's others, but I'd like to go point my point.
On this issue, yes, we drafted the agreement. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Sanchez and the county attorneys. They're very professional, answering questions at night or when they're away at conferences, and just very helpful to get this done. And we very much appreciate that effort. And this is a, it's a 10-page document. It came together very easily and very well from our perspective, so we appreciate that. On this particular issue, it's been our understanding all along that the concept of this was to provide a framework for tax credit developments. That's where all the action is. That's where all the housing authority's development, the vast majority of it has been. And that's what's competitive, and that's what was driving us to come here to get this agreement in the first place. And that's why we were asking it to be drafted in a way to cover those, and that the veto authority would cover those. And that was our position on that.
In that one, we're in agreement.
Well, that's where I need the court to speak about. Make sure that you understand, it's only, your veto authority is limited to the tax credit-based programs and not any other non-tax credit-based programs. Again, no intention at this point, but it would not preclude Home for doing any other type of projects if they wanted to in the future. So I wanted to.
Commissioner Leon, please.
Yes, thank you, Christina. That's exactly the question that I've got. Even though at this time, they don't foresee any building or construction in the county other than tax credit-based, we don't, you never know what comes up in the future. I would like to see all construction for the next three years. You know, because something might come up that we want to build this, it's not tax credit-based, but we want to go ahead and build it. And I'd like for it to come back to the court for our information and approval.
I agree, Judge.
Yeah, I agree. Bob, how do you, you want to address that?
You'd like it to say that for all new construction, like something that's built new, you'd want it to come back under the veto framework in this agreement?
Anything in the county.
Jerry.
So I guess my question is, why are you putting more restrictions on us than you would any other developer that would be doing something that's not competitive with the county?
Well, I would say you are the requister, and we want to go in that direction, but we want to make sure that we'll have these three years to work with each other, and if something goes south, we can go from there. But I think, Jerry, that it's fair to the county, it's fair to our taxpayers, that we are aware of any possible construction that is not tax credit-based.
I would, I would agree with you if the housing authority wasn't giving up so much. So right now, if you look at as per capita, if you put as many vouchers per capita into the county that you have right now in the city, that's a potential win for the county of $5 to $7 million annually to the county's benefit. So now to say, hey, listen, we want all your vouchers, but because you're the requister, we're not going to give anything at all, I think that's problematic. When on top of what we're doing is providing additional housing out there that will be lost if we don't step in because we're the only ones that can?
I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but in my mind, a voucher is, and please correct me, I thought is, there's a family of four, and they find a home that they can live in, then it's paid for through Home. Is that what you're referring to?
Right, so a voucher, right, so right now, what you have, you have jurisdictional limits. And the problem with the vouchers and the flexibility of the vouchers is that the bureaucracy is such that it takes months in order for people to flow, and that people aren't flowing freely into the county or back and forth because of the limitations of the bureaucracy. By taking down the jurisdiction, it gives you more of a regional approach and access, where people aren't leaving our housing authority to try to get oversight from the county housing authority, or vice versa. And in that process, that then allows that free flow, and it allows us to try to put project-based vouchers to make our deals work, right?
And Jerry, I'm sorry, I agree with you, but I'm trying to get it straight in my mind, that vouchers do not include new construction.
That is incorrect. Vouchers do. So, and that's what I was trying to explain last time. What you can do is you can assign vouchers to a project. Those are called project-based vouchers. And that's what we're talking about doing as we do some of this construction, is to try to compensate for the deficiencies. Because a lot of times when you do these as a housing authority, is you're building at a loss. You're actually losing money when you do the construction because of the cost it takes for us to build it and everything else. So you compensate that with a voucher that increases the rents on some of the extremely low-income families. So that's one part of this, right? But on the other side of this, as we do this, the free flow of vouchers to anybody who receives our voucher, be able to go anywhere in the county, can be in the tunes of millions of dollars a year and benefit to the families, to landlords, and to the county in general. So that as we talk about, hey, that we're talking about letting this free flow happen, it's not just about new construction. It's about literally possible millions of dollars flowing from inside the city limits to the county limits for the benefit of county and extremely low-income families that live in the county. It gives that type of flexibility and opportunity. Yes, ma'am?
Well, but I guess I don't understand why Commissioner Leon's request would be unreasonable if Home, I disagree with you. I think the county is giving up a lot by allowing Home to extend its jurisdiction into the county. That's what we're giving up. In exchange for that, all we're asking is for Home to come to us whenever there is a project, and I don't think that that's unreasonable.
If I may ask a question, and what are you giving up?
We're allowing your jurisdiction into the county. Isn't that what we're doing?
But what are you giving up? I mean, you made this statement, you're giving something up.
So that's the entire discussion that we had at the last meeting on November 8th, where we don't want to give up the autonomy that we have, the oversight that we may have. I mean, that's, I don't want to rehash everything that happened at the November 8th meeting.
No, but you're gaining $13 million in affordable housing that you will lose. You're not losing anything.
Okay, but we're also giving to you the ability to extend your jurisdiction. My point is, is that it's not just one-sided. That's the point I wanted to make. And I agree with Commissioner Leon that it has to be a partnership. I mean, I don't understand why Home would not want to come to Commissioners Court to discuss new projects in the county.
Because, all right, there's a couple of things going on. One is, we do construction, we do a lot of development, we do a lot. We are a housing authority, and we are experts in what we do, right? What you're talking about doing is you're talking about taking oversight and control of the housing authority from anything that would happen in the county. City Council doesn't have that control. You don't have that control over your Board of Commissioners in your county right now. What we're offering to you with the tax credits is something more than even you have control of your own housing authority. So what you're now asking is not just tax credits, you're talking about everything. Any development, any 202 property, any migrant farm worker USDA, any market rate that we'd like to build, any workforce housing, you want to say, we want complete control of the housing authority. This is the poison pill that was put in this thing after we left, because this is not what the agreement was. When we stood here in front of you last time, we had a conversation, it was for those things that would be in competition with the county housing authority. This, and what I'm talking about on the side of here, has no competition with the county housing authority. And all the restrictions you're putting on us, you don't have that on your county housing authority or any other developer that exists inside the city or the United States that wants to come to the county. So why are you doing it to us? What have we done that is so bad? What is, right now, we house 40,000 people in all of your districts. You want all this oversight over us. What have we done wrong? What is your fear that we have done that's so intractable that you would say, we want control of anything that you would do in the county, even though you don't contribute one penny into any of our budgets? Why?
I don't think anyone is suggesting that the housing authority is doing anything wrong, but you have to understand that the county Commissioners Court is going to want oversight.
What are you afraid of? You want oversight. What do you think? Give me an example of what we could do that you would have to have oversight of that would stop us because of the fear that you have. What is it outside of the competition with the tax credits? What is it?
Well, I'm going to get to some concerns that I have on the use of these, let me tell you, the 303.042 public facility corporations, that's one of my concerns. But I wanted to discuss that after we get done with this part of it. I'm just saying, I am in favor of the county having oversight. I agree with Commissioner Leon's position. I, that's where I stand.
And my question to you, Jerry, is, what are you afraid of? I mean, it's a three-year deal. Let's do it. Let's see how it works out. If it's too cumbersome, then we, hey, we can streamline it. Home's been real good, they work with us, we want to work with them. We don't want control, we just want to know what's going on in our, the taxpayers' county.
Mr., I understand. I don't know how to unwind it if my vouchers flow into the county. Once my vouchers flow into the county, they're in the county. Once my vouchers flow into the county, they're in the county. I'm not going to tell those families they have to leave. There's no way to undo that which we do with the vouchers.
But I don't think that that's what Commissioner Leon is talking about.
No, but that's, it's, it's part of the same deal. The vouchers going to the county and the development are two sides of the same coin. I can't cleave the coin in half. If they go to the county, they're there forever.
But you can't tell us when there's going to be new construction, when there's going to be a new project. You can't tell us that.
If, if I lose any opportunity to do construction past the next three years, I've given up, I've given you millions of dollars in support in vouchers and we've lost everything the next three years. We get nothing other than possibly this one tax credit. And that's not fair to us either. I mean, you're talking about $5 to $7 million that, right now, you, you're not giving any money towards this into the county. And then in three years, if you guys want to just say no to us and take our vouchers and keep them in the county, you have that and we have nothing. We can't go out and develop anything. We're, we're stuck. We just, we just gave up an incredible valuable asset inside the city. At the same time, I can't even go out and continue to help the entities or the people that I'd like to do in the county. And that, to me, isn't fair. I mean, the agreement that we had last time, the agreement that we had last time as we stood here, was that fine. It was for, it was for tax credits only and at the same time, our vouchers were going to go. I'll be honest with you, the, the net financial benefit to the county far exceeds in your favor to what we would, what, what the, the potential risk is for the tax credits. Far exceeds.
Yeah, and that's, that's really has been my, my concern, that we don't limit anybody from opportunities. If I look at it from a business perspective, asking what we're saying here in the court, I wouldn't go for it. As a businessman, I wouldn't go for someone saying, "Well, you need to check in on me," but, you know, you don't do that with anybody, but you're going to do it with me. And I think we're having a hard time separating the agreement that we made and then your potential of being able to do things that support the voucher system, right? Because the more you build, the more opportunities for the vouchers to be used. And so, from a business perspective, I, I wouldn't agree that we limit further than we need to, simply because we might have a concern. But if we look at you as a business partner, I, I wouldn't set those limitations. I think they're separate from our agreement on November 8th and that's my concern.
Judge, can I?
I was going to add, is any time a Housing Authority does new construction, or they start construction, they have to hold a meeting at the location, have to post it in the newspaper, they have to have a board meeting at the Housing Authority, they have to have a board meeting at the site, they have to send a letter to every property owner within a quarter mile, they have to post a sign at the site for at least 30 days. There's no kind of new construction that we could do without numerous layers. This is, and this is part, this is built in to Texas, the Texas statutes. Anytime a Housing Authority is going to build something new, it has all of those elements involved. At least 30 days' notice, a sign at the site, letter to every property owner within a quarter mile, and I'll talk to Mr. Sashon, but I think we could very easily provide notice because we're already, we already do give notice. If we're going to build somewhere, we're already, as a matter of practice, telling, for instance, the city representative in that area, "We're going to be building, you may be getting calls. We want you to understand what this project looks like ahead of time." We don't just go do things in a, in a non, very, very transparent, very public manner. And, and that would be my, my suggestion, but I would need to talk to Mr. Sashon, that we'd certainly afford you the same notice that we're, we're, we're providing by law. If for new construction-
Let, let me hear from Commissioner Stout.
Yep. So, and for, for me, it, it matters because, I mean, it's the same issue that was brought up when we had the conversation about a merger. Because this is not a business, I want to make it very, like, I want to make that distinction. It's not a business, it's a public service. So, comparing it to a business, I think, is erroneous. It's a public service and, and when you have a public service, it's going to be operating in the unincorporated areas of the county. I want the county to have some type of oversight when it comes to what they're doing, which is why I was very, a very staunch advocate for having, for asking that the Housing Authority allow the county to have a member on their board if they were going to do the merger. Y'all didn't want to do that. And so, you know, we had this other bill passed to do this. And, and for me, you know, to answer your question as, as to, as to why, why, why I would want this is because the county doesn't have zoning authority. And, you know, we, we, we don't, we, we don't, we, we don't do this with other developers because we don't have zoning authority. So, and I think if we, if we did have zoning authority, we probably would be doing this to other developers. At least, I, I would be advocating for that. But, and, and also regarding the vouchers, I don't, I don't, I don't really understand why we continue to tie them to this agreement in the first place. You're trying to serve more people, then why are we making it conditional upon this agreement? You know, I, I think this could promote unregulated, unregulated development if we're subsidizing new apartment growth in the county, and I'm not sure why we'd want to do that. Again, you know, I, I think that maybe, maybe what we could do is look at this project on its own for the time being, you know, do an, do an MOU for this application alone so that we can meet that January 4th deadline, so we don't miss the opportunity for the, you know, the $14 million that you are afraid of, of, of missing out on. And, and that gives us, because I know that our, our attorneys have done a lot of work on this over the last number of weeks to provide us this information, and, and I know that there, as we've said in, in previous meetings, there, there are very few experts in this field, and I know that Home certainly has access to the most experience that we have locally. But I, I feel like I'm not fully comfortable in, in having given our, our staff and our attorneys the time needed or the resources in, in the form of outside experts to complete our due diligence in the process. And so, you know, I, I know that, that it's your desire, Home, to, and, and we, and we want to, I, I think in the, in the prior vote that we had here at the Commissioners' Court wanted, expressed our willingness to help with that. We, we don't want to let the opportunity for the $14 million project to slip past, you know, and, and get this application in by the deadline. So, can we do this, this MOU for this application alone so we can meet that deadline and, and provide time for us to answer these complex outstanding questions that we have? And I think that that gives also our, our Housing Authority the time to review their voucher question and provide us feedback, you know, with no excuses going forward if they do not take advantage of the time that we, that we provide. So, you know, I, I think that, that could be a solution for the time being. And, and we can have, you know, we can have this conversation a little more, more, deeply after we have a little more information from experts that, that we have, have employed so that we know exactly what we're getting ourselves into.
We'd leave this discussion outside the MOU? I'm not sure.
So, so, just to be clear that, you know, I know Commissioner Robinson's there as well, but, but, so there's, there's two issues, I think, that are right here before the court. One is in terms of clarity, and I haven't heard consensus from the whole court, so I'd like to do that before we move on. The first issue that was raised was whether or not, how, how you wanted to treat the issue regarding other projects that are not tax credit-based, right? You can make that part of your MOU if you want to. You heard Home's response to that. There's another alternative, as Mr. Blumenfeld had mentioned, there could be a notification. So, of course, there are the statutory notification requirements for the other non-tax credit-based projects that you would be hearing about anyway. Or you can require, we'd have to ask, I'd have to ask Mom to flush that out, but we could have, for example, perhaps, just a notification to the court, to the Commissioners' Court, "This is what we're intending to do, this is what we're looking at," not have it so much where you would have veto authority over it, but it would just be merely a notification is what I understood from Mr. Blumenfeld. So, those are, that's something I need some clarity on. So, that's one issue on one side, right? That's, those are the issues before you. The second item, as Commissioner Stout had mentioned, was, is the court interested in considering a standalone agreement, interlocal agreement? And when I say standalone, interlocal agreement, we're only talking about the veto approval authority for the tax credit-based program. So, we would remove any language with regards to any other projects, any other non-tax credit-based projects. We can flush that out, I'll work that with Mr. Blumenfeld. And make it, again, just a standalone tax credit-based project that you would all would approve. They're going to come before you, give you the written description of the project in order to meet the application deadlines, which I believe is, is next year. So, those are the two issues that the court needs to kind of figure out where you want to go with either one of those.
And Christina, from a legal perspective, do we have the, the right to challenge any other development outside of the tax credits? Because it just seems to me that at that point, they're acting as any other developer. And, and I, I want to make sure that, that we're not saying, that we're not extending our authority and saying, "Well, we can also, you know, have you do these other things outside of the tax credits." Because the whole thing was around tax credits.
Sure.
We agreed on that, but now we're sort of expanding our authority to say, "Well, we also want to make sure that anything else you do." Can you explain those other things that they're able to do?
Sure.
What, what authority do we have as Commissioners' Court?
To my knowledge, it's, it's very limited, right, in terms of authority? And that, and then when I say to private developers too, I'm also talking about your El Paso County Housing Authority. I mean, they have their own jurisdiction. As far as I know, they have not gone before this court to have you all authorize any particular projects that they would be interested in going to. Of course, you do appoint their members and they do provide quarterly reports, but it's the same type of model in terms of specifically asking, "Do we have your permission to go out there and operate?" I'm, I'm not aware of any other authority that does that, whether private or public such as your El Paso County Housing Authority. Now, again, with the tax credit-based projects, it's a whole other different animal in terms of the application and what's required and what ends up getting reviewed, but I am, I am not aware of that, Judge, to answer your question.
Well, I think, I think that's important.
Yeah.
And Judge, I just want to clarify, I don't think that at the last meeting, I, I frankly don't think this issue came up. I don't think we really discussed that distinction, whether or not we were only talking about the tax credit properties or we were talking about all of the properties. So, I want to make sure that that's clear. I think, I knew, I know I really started thinking about that distinction after hearing from Christina. So, I don't, I, I don't think that that was by any means something that was settled at the last meeting.
Judge, because of some legal questions I've got, do you think it's possible that we might be able to go into executive session for Lurie?
We could, we could go into executive session to discuss specific legal questions, not the, not the policy questions. So, I guess with that, you're wanting to do that for this particular item. Maybe before we go into executive session, we can talk about the second item that I do need the court's feedback at, regardless if you do a standalone agreement or if you want to pursue your, your other avenues as well, the options in terms of what you're, you're talking about. So, the other item for the court's consideration, the court was interested in having language in the interlocal agreement regarding a minimum of 20% of the project units will be reserved for individuals at or below the 30% AMFI. AMFI stands for the Area Medium Family Income. Again, that was the language that this court had requested. Home has counter-proposed with some different language their proposal would provide, and this was an update based on the last conversation we had, it would be per TDHC application requirements, the numbers of units that will be for individuals in the lowest income levels for each project. Home is here, they can give you their explanation in terms of why they, they cannot commit to that percentage in the interlocal agreement. As I understand it, it is tied to some financial requirements as well as some expectations that TD, TDHCA does have for Home as the organization. But I would like to turn it over to Home at this point if they can answer that, that issue for you all.
Thank you. Bob?
We're asking, in our language, we're, we're telling this Commissioners' Court that the Housing Authority, Home, is always committed to serve the lowest-income families. But when we are applying for a new project, we've got to go through a variety of requirements from the state agency. And they, they have in their own application process, their own methodology for an application, including percentages for the very low income. And what your requirement is far, it, it goes much further and beyond anything that the state requires, and it could put a Housing Authority, a Home project, in jeopardy. But not only with the state agency, but it, but your requirement also might and, and would raise issues with, there are always lenders and investors. And they're really just lenders. There's two, two types of lenders, but one's called an investor. And, and this language would also be problematic in the future dealing with them. And that's why we've, we've proposed language that we think gets us to the same place, which is showing you that we have a commitment to serve the lowest-income families, but stating it in a way that doesn't hurt our ability to get projects. And there's other people who can explain that in, in greater detail.
And what percentage were you thinking of would satisfy the lending component? Or you, let's-
Before you sit down, Mr. Blumenfeld, I, I have a question. In, insofar as vouchers, would vouchers also include buildings or complexes, 50-unit complexes, or are they much smaller in scale?
The vouchers would be, for every project, the, the Housing Authority has the ability to per, put vouchers there, a certain number. So, if there's 50 units, the Housing Authority can decide on its own how many vouchers to put at that property. And it's, it's, that's a question that arises very late. The way that it happens is the Housing Authority applies to the state. The state has its own way of looking at projects. And they say, "Yeah, we think this one wins. We like it, we're going to fund it." After that point, there's still a period of time where there's a marketplace to borrow money and to get investors, literally a marketplace, like going out on the stock, the stock exchange or going from bank to bank to bank, talking to different banks. And the reason we're, one of the reasons we oppose this language is, in that marketplace, we're trying to attract the best financial terms for the project, the, the most amount of money at the lowest interest rates.
Okay, so what you're saying is-
The vouchers play in there. I know it's confusing, but we, we have consultants who help us decide how many vouchers to put there. Vouchers pay a certain amount of money versus just having a tax credit union, a pure tax credit union with, a unit without a voucher.
So, it could be a 50, 50 complex unit, 100 complex unit?
No. It will be a 50 to 60-unit complex, but the number of vouchers there may be 10, or it may be 20, or it may be 30. And those are not in addition. So, if there's, just say there's units 1 through 50. Sometimes the Housing Authority lays on top of that vouchers and, and they float. They're not tied to a specific unit. They're not door 2 and door 7 and door 14. But at any given time, the Housing Authority might have 30 voucher residents. It's, we're layering two separate programs into one project. So, the total number of units does not go up. It's always going to be whatever we proposed it was going to be to the state. When we talk about vouchers, it gets very confusing. I understand because it's, it's, it's not a normal way for most developers to, to put people into their units. I don't know, did I answer your question though?
Yes, you basically did. I, I was just trying to understand in my mind that if, if we approve this, we have that 50-unit complex that we already talked about.
Right.
But then it'll be a ratio of about 20 to 1 that, okay, we approved this one, but then there's these other 20 that got built that we had no, we, yeah, you did set a public meetings, I understand that, where we, as a county, have no authority to have you change your mind. I'm, I'm just, I'm in that area where I'm a little concerned that we have no say whatsoever in how and when and where you build.
I'm not sure if Commissioner Leon was there. Okay. So, I guess my question is, so the whole reason that we're here today is because at the November 8th meeting, the court found that there was a need for low-income housing. And we expressed, at least I know, I expressed that for me, the population that I was more, most concerned about was the extremely low income, the folks that are at less than the 30% AMI. So, I guess I don't understand why, in a 50-unit complex, why reserving or ensuring that at least 10 of those, 20%, 10, would be reserved for these most needy, most vulnerable? I, I guess I don't understand why that's not reasonable, why that's not possible.
And I'll, I'll let Mr. Bowling answer.
I mean, if the goal of the Housing Authority is really to take care of the folks who have nowhere else to get affordable housing- nowhere else to get affordable housing, I don't understand why we can't reserve a certain number of units for those people that we're most concerned about.
I'll let Mr. Bowling go first, then we'll follow up.
Okay, so I'm Bobby Bowling. I'm a tax-credit developer, located 100% in El Paso, for the record. I think you all know that. But I was asked to come here today on behalf of Home as a subject matter expert for this specific item. And just to give you, you know, you all are aware, I'm, I'm in this field. I've been awarded at least one tax-credit development every year since 2001 in the state of Texas by TDHCA. There's no other developer in the state of Texas that can say that. A competitive tax-credit award every year since 2001. So I'm a, you couldn't have a better subject matter expert on this before you than me, because I've, I've won more than anybody else. And I'm here to tell you that, and I've been involved with the rules and the development and the QAP and the real estate under, the real estate analysis rules that go into place. And I'm just here to tell you, you can't, I can't submit something just because I want it to be, you know, 20% of 30% AMFI units. There's a very complex matrix and a very complex mathematical equation that has to be done to prove financial feasibility in the application process. There's, you cannot overcome a ruling by real estate analysis at TDHCA that the project submitted is infeasible. And so you, you put this matrix together, and I don't even know what my, for my 2022 projects, that's going to be yet. Because there's a lot of things at play, right? Construction costs, land costs, impact fees, taxes, permit costs, inflation, rents, utilities. So when that day comes, and it's going to be sometime in February, that we make this final decision, because the application's due on March 1st, so you just have to take a snapshot in time, and you have to go, this is what I'm going with. If you told me that I had to do a development with 20%, 30% AMFI in a rigid contract, I couldn't, I couldn't agree to that, because we don't know what that number's going to be. So my suggestion to you, and my suggestion to them, when, when they asked me about this, was the language should say, the maximum allowable under TDHCA rules and real estate analysis guidelines of 30% AMFI units. But to put a hard and fast number there, you could be, and you probably will be, because our area median family income is so low, here in El Paso, it's 51,000. And if you're in Austin and it's 85, that's a different deal, right? Because it's the same construction cost for us as it is for them. Land prices might be a little different. But you can say with some certainty what number of 30% AMFI units can go in. And the minimum that TDHCA wants to see to give you the maximum amount of points, just for point of reference, on a rural deal, is 7.5% of the units must be 30% AMFI. Of course, we want as many of those as possible, because they're the easiest to rent, frankly. The rents are the lowest, and there's a large population of need there. We're not competing for that tenant with a market apartment complex like we are sometimes on the 60% AMFI. I mean, frankly, it's a sad thing to say, but they have no other place to go. So we want to serve as many of those individuals as we can. But when we put our matrix together and our application together, we can't not submit something with just some hard and fast number and say, here it is, if it doesn't meet their feasibility criterion. And if I did that, I'm wasting my time, and I'm wasting my money, and in their case, they would be wasting taxpayer money to put an application into TDHCA that would be deemed infeasible prima facie the first day it's opened. So my suggestion to you, and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Hogan, and it's a noble thing, and it's, and it's fair. But my suggestion to you is to put in the MOU the maximum allowable. And, and they could show you, or I could show you, the day of my application being submitted, look, Commissioner Hogan, the minimum debt service coverage ratio is 1.15. I submitted it at 1.16, so I had a little bit of leeway. These are the numbers I used, and I came up with nine units out of 50. Could be 30%. And I, and I could show you that on March 1st, when I submitted it. But right now, today, even me, I couldn't show you that. I don't have that put together. So I don't know what the percentage is. We always, in El Paso, squeak by, by meeting the 7.5% minimum for the maximum amount of points, if that makes sense, in the QAP, for a rural deal, for a unincorporated El Paso County deal. In the city, because incomes are a little higher, and there's some other things at play, we're required to go to 10%. But those are the two floors for the maximum amount of points, and that point criterion in the QAP. So that, that's, did I make, did I answer your question or make that clear?
Well, just to make sure I'm understanding, so TDHCA will tell you what the minimum number of units for the extremely low income or the maximum number?
If you want the maximum amount of points, there's 28-point criterions in the QAP. This is one of them. Reaching the extremely low-income population is, as you could see, it's a good public policy goal, right? So they have a point criterion for that. So to get those points, the maximum amount of points, you must reach a minimum number of units. The same thing that you're saying. It's just not 20% in the QAP. It's 7.5% for rural deals, which this would qualify as a rural deal, and 10% for deals within a city.
I guess I'm just worried that...
And so you would have to also round up if, you know, if, if like there's a, you can't do 3.5 units, you would have to do four to get to that.
And that's what 7.5% of 50 would be, four units. So in a 50-unit complex, we'd only be ensuring that four units are set aside for the extremely low income, which to me doesn't seem to serve the purpose that we want, which is to provide housing opportunities to the most vulnerable, to the poorest, right, who can't get housing anywhere else. If they can't get it from a public housing authority, then where are they going to get it from? It seems to me that that's the entire purpose of the housing authority.
But this is a source of funding, though, keep in mind. The intent of this program was to help working families. It's not the public housing program from HUD. There's a totally different program that Congress has pretty much defunded to develop and build public housing complexes in this country. The housing authorities in this country aren't operating the way they did in the '60s and the '70s, or the '80s, or even the '90s. They're having to come to this program. This is the only program that, that Congress continues to increase funding for every year. And it's really, if you look at the intent of this program, it's for working-class American families. It's not intended for 30% AMFI. There's a, there's a smidge, there's a portion that gets served, but the underserved portion of the population in this country that, that was being addressed in 1986, when they came up with this, was working-class families in between public housing and homeownership. And that's a wide swath. That's a lot of families. And so that's the intent of the tax-credit program. Public housing is something different. And let me just say, there's one other thing to consider. It's not a mandate, but in every single one of my apartment complexes, there's more than that minimum of 30% AMFI people being served. Because now we get to this voucher thing. So there's a tenant-based voucher. He was talking about project-based vouchers. And I'm not a subject matter expert on that. I don't have any project-based Section 8 vouchers. I am an, I am an expert on tenant-based vouchers, though. And tenant-based vouchers are when you go in, you know, you know, customer X, and goes to their public housing authority and gets on the, on the list for a tenant-based voucher, then the voucher is issued, they finally, their number came up, or whatever, and now they get to go find a, a place to rent in our community. So we take those people, just in the normal course of who's next on the waiting list, too, and probably about 10% of my portfolio of my 3,572 units, about 350 of those, are tenant-based Section 8 voucher holders. And the vast majority of those, I think more than 80% was what you got presented to in November, are letting, are making less than 30% AMFI. So I have my set-aside units, then I have random voucher people. And the random voucher people can live in a 60% unit, or a 50% unit, or whatever, because HUD allows the voucher to be for fair-market rent in the community in which they live. And the fair-market rent, fortunately in El Paso, every year I've been in this program, exceeds the 60% AMFI rent that we get from TDHCA. So we have this other class of people that's not necessarily living in a 30% dedicated unit, but is making 30%. And I'm telling you, from my experience, that's about another 10% on top of the 7.5% or the 10% of units that I committed to at the beginning. So you kind of get to your 20% organically anyways, through the different programs. It's just not a mandate in the application. Because in the application, you agree to take this lesser rent. And in El Paso, that lesser rent does not cover operating costs. Forget about debt service, because these deals all have debt. It can't even operate. The cost of the manager on a prorata share, the cost of the utilities, the cost of property taxes on a prorata share, it's not covered by a 30% unit. So that's...
So it seems the problem, from your perspective, is if we try to somehow mandate the units, right?
Correct.
But what if then we just require residents? It seems like that's not a problem, because most of the residents in a lot of these properties do fall within the extremely low income. So from my perspective, that would reach the county's goal of making sure that we're serving the, the most needy.
But that has to happen organically, Commissioner, because I can't discriminate against a family that makes 60% AMFI and put to the front of the line somebody that's got a voucher with 30% AMFI. I can't discriminate under the program guidelines and really under the Fair Housing Act. I have to just take the next person on the list. If that next person happens to be a voucher holder, then great. If not, then, you know, it's just somebody who's agreeing to pay the rent out of their own pocket as a working-class El Paso family. I'm telling you, and I could show you data over time, but I mean, I don't know that we have time to do that now. Had, had we had a, a meeting, I could have shown, shown you this data. But it's about 10% that happen organically, that are making 30% AMFI or below, and come with a voucher, and get into the unit in time. Now, of course, that changes over time, and I'll tell you also, just anecdotally, typically at the beginning, we have a lot less voucher holders. We have like, like, there's, there's a lot more just working-class families that want to pay 600 bucks a month to live in a three, three-bedroom apartment with two baths, and they're not voucher holders. Over time, like my older properties have more voucher holders. My newer properties have less. I couldn't scientifically tell you why that is, but that's, that's a fact in the data, too. So that's...
But it just seems to me like there has to be a way that we could accomplish both, right? There's got to be a way to do it.
Well, I think...
We haven't figured it out.
And I'm, and the solution, and I agree. The solution I'm proposing to you, like if this was my deal and I was negotiating it for, for my deal, I would say, capture me with the language that says, I am committed to providing the maximum amount of 30% AMFI units that, that will allow the project to remain financially feasible as defined by TDHCA.
And they provide those numbers?
Yes, well, I don't want to say yes to that, because that's not 100% true. They provide, they provide the parameters, right, under which we can live.
But they'll tell you 7.5 of a 55 unit?
Correct, but a lot of times, I'm doing more than 7.5. If the numbers allow me, I get to 10% on a rural deal, or 12% on a city deal, or 15%. We want to do, we want to do, I don't want to say this, but it's easier for us, as an owner and as a manager, to rent to the lower rent-income levels. We have this other force of this investor and lender community that wants us to maximize the amount of revenue. So there's this push, but really, we drive the train at the beginning, and we get to, we get to put this together. And like, I just submitted an application for additional credits, and my debt service coverage ratio was literally that example. The minimum is 1.15, and I submitted with a 1.16. Because I'm willing to be aggressive as I can to serve my community, I think, and Home is too. They submit their applications, they're public record, I see them. We all do the same thing. We want to get as many low-income rents, the lowest rents we can possibly get by with, and still meet the TDHCA rules and requirements, and find an investor and a lender.
And I guess you alluded to what just has always made me a little bit weary of these types of projects. It is the, the investor interests and the interests of housing, really, the most low-income that need it. I mean, those are the two interests that are pushing and pulling against each other.
That's correct.
And that's personally what's always made me a little bit wary, because from my perspective, the most important part should be housing the ones that need it.
And so that's the difference between this program and public housing. Again, you know, public housing, 100% funded by, by 100% taxpayer dollars, there's no investor in that deal. There's no lender in that deal. It's just, it's just taxpayer. And you get to set the goals. You get to say, we're going to do this and this. You're right, though. This has investor and lender interest. This was to close the 1986 sheltering loophole that doctors and lawyers and people were doing in this country, where they were investing in apartments, and they came up with this new program. Because it was, it was realized, and I don't know how Congress got this right, but they did. Probably the only thing they've ever gotten right, really, in my lifetime, bipartisan and, you know, president of one party and Congress of another party. And they got this right. They wanted to serve working-class families. They wanted to have very little bureaucracy and oversight, because that is the benefit to having the private sector people in here. When the investor comes in and they're getting tax credits, and the risk of me not managing it right and operating it right, is they lose tax credits that they paid for in advance, they are the ones that do the monitoring. TDHCA and HUD do have very, HUD has almost, almost no oversight over tax-credit developments. The state agency has some, but it's limited. And the private sector, so that's, that's the trade-off, is, you're right, they're conflicting interests, but there is some benefit to having the private sector in this, because it's self-policing.
And I think that can sometimes be dangerous, when you rely on self-policing.
Well, you know, that's maybe another debate.
Right, that's a dilemma.
And I'd love to go to lunch with you and talk to you about that.
See, my perspective is that, I'm really careful, and it might be misunderstood, and I didn't say it was a business. I said, if it were a business, it wouldn't be negotiable. And we're trying to be as business-friendly as we can as a county. I can tell you how many businesses have gone away from the county, because we don't act quick enough, we don't do the right things, and they get frustrated and they leave. And so I personally have seen that. So I'm trying to become more friendly, and I don't want to put restrictions on, that I don't have to put restrictions. But what I see, my perspective is, if we're able to get nine units in, from 50, and that's better than zero, right? Because if I say, well, you know, I'm, I don't like, I would like for you guys to have more, but within the spectrum, if that's the most I can get, I'm not going to tell nine citizens, you know what, I'm sorry, we just don't agree because we couldn't get 15. Because, because I think attacking this problem is slicing it from public housing, from our own, what are, what are we doing as a county to improve low-income housing? You know, so I don't see that, I don't want us, for you guys to be our solution to a big problem. To me, you're part of a solution, and if I get nine, I got nine, better than getting zero. So that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, that, that I don't want to restrict you, where we end up not getting anything, simply because we're limiting your ability to get the funding or limiting. So that's been my concern. I'm always looking at it, that happened to us, just to give an analogy, when we were, would get stuck with, you know, we want you to pay $13 an hour, and, and sometimes we turn companies away, and there were so many people making six, I mean, $7.50 that would have loved to make 10, but we said, no, you know what, if it's not 13, we don't want you here. Well, what about all the people that would love to make 10? And so it's my same perspective is, if I can get nine versus zero, I'm going to get nine. You know, if that's what, what I can get, and that's one little bitty slice of, of helping low-income families, well, then let's, let's put something on the table. So just, just so people understand that, I'm not trying to, one side or the other, but simply trying to protect that whatever can happen in the county, I don't want to limit anybody. I don't want to say, you know, like I said, I'll repeat it again. If nine people were going to get it, but because we're restrictive, none, those nine don't get it, I don't feel good at all. And so I wanted to, I see this as one of many ways of accomplishing helping low-income, not the full answer to, to helping them, so.
It's, it's not perfect, Judge. You're right. But there's an old saying that somebody told me when I was young, it, don't let perfection be the enemy of something that's very, very good. And what's before you is something that's very, very good. Is it perfect? It's not. It's not a perfect program. It's not, it's not 100% led by public policy goals. There's, there's a, there's a trade-off in this program. But it's, it's a very, very good program. And just to put it into perspective, I mean, they're talking about doing a 100% low-income... And just to put it into perspective, I mean, they're talking about doing a 100% low-income project. There's not going to be any market units in the deal. It's going to serve 60%, 50%, and 30% AMFI families. And in El Paso, a 60% AMFI family is making less than $30,000 a year. That's a poor family, guys, and that's a, that family is teetering on being below the federal poverty level. The federal poverty level is somewhere around $25,000 right now. I mean, we have a vast swath, more than 20% of our community lives below the federal poverty level. And almost all the families are going to be served, are going to be living below the federal poverty level. Are they making 30%? No, but that's 15,000. And there's different programs that are available to those folks. There are. I mean, this working-class family that's making $25,000 a year, this is it. This is the only program that's out there for them, the tax credit program, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Full agreement. So we had proposed a 20%. There's revised language, as proposed by Home for their, as was explained to them.
Also wanted our tax credit consultant, Sarah Anderson, if she could just talk for two minutes as well, she's online.
Who do we have?
Sarah Anderson?
Sarah Anderson, hi Sarah, how are you? I've been seeing you guys there, but I hadn't given you a chance, so go ahead, Sarah, appreciate it.
That's okay, thank you. And I don't think I have necessarily an enormous amount to add, because I feel like Mr. Bowling has addressed most of the issues. I think that, I would like to talk about the issue of the 20 at 30%, because I understand the heartburn that comes with this request. I started my career at the state agency on a policy side, and my job at the time was to try and get 30% units into this program. And so I've come at it from a policy side, and I come at it from a practical side. And I pushed really hard to get even 5%, and that was across the board, 5%. Through the course of the years, as I've been on the outside, it has, as Bobby said, gone up to 10% in urban areas and 7.5% in rural areas. And I will tell you that that was a very hard-fought, negotiated with the development community, the state agency, and the people that actually finance and fund these developments. And, you know, these figures were not, they didn't come lightly. They came through years of negotiation, and the point being that, in a rural area, 7.5% doing much more than that can crater a deal. That we all want to be able to serve the lowest income, but there are financial realities of the deal as well. And so, you know, I just want to give a little bit of background on where that number came from, so that maybe there would be a little bit more comfort, that it's considered even a stretch and difficult to reach for developers. It is not an easy number to reach, and when you have El Paso incomes being almost the lowest in the state, much less the county, that 7.5% is going to make for a very skinny deal to begin with. So, but I do think that, you know, we could sit down and explain with numbers, maybe where we can show you the limitations and why we are where we are. But I just wanted to reiterate that that number is what is considered, I think, a stress point by both the development community and by the allocating agency. And the ability to do more will come down to having vouchers available, voucher holders. And just to kind of put it into context, and why this 30% is scary for everybody, is that, you know, we all know the history of public housing. And the reason why public housing didn't work was, the government paid for the buildings to be built, but they never funded enough for them to be kept up. And over the course of 40 years, we saw what happened. And I think we all just need to be very cognizant of that, that nobody wants to build something that in 10 or 20 years, we can't keep up. And I think that's, it's for everyone's benefit, that whatever is built has long-term sustainability for the residents. So if you have any other questions about, you know, how some of these policy discussions got here, I'd be welcome questions, and I think that's all I needed to say.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Judge, we have three additional speakers that have signed up also, if you want to hear from them.
Timothy is, I see on the screen, you want to comment?
Yeah, yeah, it's funny, I can see myself on the screen, so I had a feeling I might be speaking next. Could someone just give me a little wave and confirm you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, thank you. So, like Sarah, I'm not going to have a lot to add to Mr. Bowling's testimony and his presentation, because of very comprehensive. What I can do is validate what he and she both said. That's a very factual, very nuanced, and very useful conversation and presentation that you just received, and it's very consistent with what our experience is in our multi-state jurisdiction. So we're operating in many, many states as development partners with housing authorities and as developers, you know, without housing authority partnership. We've really enjoyed exactly this kind of discussion, where the sentiments are perfectly as laid out here today. The tension between the need and the desire to do more for as many as you possibly can is happening everywhere we go, especially today. So Commissioner, when I hear you describe that, that deep-seated need to make sure that it's clear, that there's a depth of need that we need to dig as deeply into as possible, hear it loud and clear. I think that also, Judge, when I hear you speak about, I want to be careful to make sure that we don't create a criteria where zero units are provided, as opposed to nine units, that deeply affordable, set aside. And that very much is what hangs in the balance. I think where Sarah and Bobby were kind of converging is in the arena of financial feasibility. There is a real reality, when Sarah says crater the deal, that there's an underwritten feasibility that isn't just questionable in the eyes of an investor or lender, but is real. What that investor and lender cares most about is that thing's long-term viability. And as an owner and an owner partner, we're always looking at it exactly the same way. It's not good enough for that housing resource, to the 30% AMI group or any of the rest of them, to be feasible for five years, or 10 years, 15 years. We have much more longer-term goal, and so, far be it for me to be the defender of investors and lenders, but our private part of the public-private partnership that is the low-income housing tax credit program, what they provide is a very clear look at long-term feasibility. They are a very valuable voice to say, "Hey, careful, underwrite it this way, structure it this way, or you're going to be very vulnerable, you know, at 1.05 debt service coverage ratio or something strategically too low. You're going to be vulnerable to long-term problems." And so they do provide a layer of protection that I think is valuable to consider. I would second, I think, the notion that targets are always better than strict restrictions. And, you know, to hear loud and clear what the county's goals are is, I think, as valuable and as necessary a piece of information without drawing hard lines in the sand. We have really challenging underwriting periods in front of us. As was said, you get an allocation of tax credits from TDHCA, and you're not nearly done. You've got a gauntlet of investor and lender criteria to walk through, and to be able to have some viability, some flexibility, is really, really important. And so I guess my overall theme here is, you know, don't create a box that's too confined or feasibility will be threatened.
Thank you. Commissioner Leon, please.
Yes, I'm going to withdraw my request for executive session. I think most of my questions, if not all of them, were answered by Mr. Bowling. Good job. And I agree with you, Judge, that something is better than nothing. So, you know, my thinking on this has cleared up a little bit.
Can we just real quickly, Timothy, can you please state your name and who you represent? Because I didn't hear that.
My goodness, I'm sorry, yes. My name is Tim Henkel, it's H-E-N-K-E-L. I'm a principal with Penrose Properties, P-E-N-N-R-O-S-E.
Are you a developer of these tax credit properties?
That's correct. Penrose owns upwards of 20,000 units in a 20-state region, the majority of which are tax credit units. We've been in business for 40 years, roughly the same duration as the tax credit program itself.
Can I also ask, do you, or I guess even Mr. Bowling, do you or Mr. Henkel and your companies, are you investors in Home or will be investors in Home?
No.
Okay. I'm not either, Commissioner. And they've asked me to respond to their RFPs as a general contractor and developer, and I've declined. I've done no work with Home or HACCP.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Penrose has been a co-developer with the housing authority on other projects, but not an investor, answering your question.
Okay, thank you.
So those were the two points that I did need the court's direction on. So just so that we don't leave this last conversation, just to keep it consistent, and I'll need it for purposes of how I'm directing the motion, just depending on which way we go. So the original proposal by the Commissioners Court was to include that minimum of 20% of the projects will be reserved for individuals at or below 30 AMFI, the area medium income. They've explained to you why that is not desirable for them, and so they've counter-proposed with language, which is, "Home will provide, per TDHCA application requirements, the number of units that will be for individuals in the lowest income levels for each project." So at this point, and I guess we'll answer questions, Commissioner, go ahead if you have a question.
Well, it's just, I know that those are two areas that the county attorney's office needs guidance on, but I had other questions regarding other sections of the MOU as I reviewed it. When, should we have that discussion now?
If we're ready to move forward, I mean, I'd like, I guess, just to kind of keep it organized, and so that we know where we're going with this. Is there a consensus at this point for the court regarding that specific language?
Well, let me ask Commissioner, if we agree on these or don't agree, does that impact what you're trying to, because I don't want to-
Well, I think the questions that I have certainly have a bearing on the entire discussion.
That's what I don't want to-
You want to start off with the questions and the Commissioner Holguin has?
These might impact what she's trying to do across.
Okay, so I was going through the, oh, can I go ahead with a question? Are we ready? Yes, okay. So as I was going through with the MOU, looking at the definitions section, I noticed bullet point E, where we're talking about home affiliates. So the MOU allows for home or a home affiliate to operate in the county. So then I wanted to learn more about home affiliates, because I don't think we had this discussion at the last meeting. So home affiliate, and then it's defined as a public facility corporation, a PFC, under Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 303. So I went ahead and I looked at Texas Government Code, Chapter 303. And so my question is, is this project that we're talking about going to be a PFC project under Section 303.042-F?
Okay. Every project that we do has a home PFC involved. That's how all of these deals happen, and that's why that language is there. Every home PFC is the same thing as a 100% owned subsidiary. If you were thinking of corporate law, what it means is, we create a subsidiary entity that takes care of our ownership and of the property. And that's why that language is here, is just to be clear that these home subsidiaries can be involved in the deal.
Yes, but I guess I'm asking if these particular projects that we're talking about are what are allowed by Section 303.042-F? That talks about the tax breaks for apartment developments in Texas? That allows that for a PFC? That's what I'm-
All PFCs operate on the same tax-exempt basis as the housing authority. A housing authority is exempt from property taxes. When the PFC does a deal like this, it's also exempt from property taxes.
Okay, but again, so I'm just trying to be clear.
I need to look at that statute, because I'm not, I don't have the-
But that's what allows for the tax breaks, right? That's what I'm trying to understand. So this tax break exemption, I mean, you have, so I read this entire section, and it looks like the way it works is that you have a private apartment developer transfer land to a PFC set up by a local authority, right, which would be the housing authority, which then leases the land and any buildings on any land, back to a limited partnership controlled by the developer, and then the local government entity, the housing authority in this case, is paid to participate in that venture. So it seems that that's the purpose of why these PFCs were created. So I'm trying to figure out, is that what's going to happen here?
From your, I'm looking up that statute, but your description of the structure is the typical tax credit structure. There's a, the land is owned by the housing authority or one of its PFCs, and then leased to a partnership. And that partnership has to exist, because it has to exist for purposes of the tax credit
Okay, so, I mean, I guess that's my concern, we haven't really talked about-
Every tax credit project ever built is either held in a limited partnership or an LLC. I mean, that's the law, that's how it exists everywhere in the United States.
Except in this case, the actual private developer is the one that gets the benefits of the tax credit, because of its relationship with the PFC and the housing authority.
Right, so in every one of these deals, a housing authority doesn't pay income tax, just like the county. When a county has income, it's exempt under the tax code. Same thing for a housing authority. If a housing authority makes a quote "profit," it's not taxed. The tax credit goes to a private entity.
Exactly, so that's what I'm trying to get at. So, yes, the housing authority, the PFC, is exempt from property taxes, but because of this relationship, then this private developer, who is actually involved in this, also gets those same tax breaks.
No, they're, the partner, the tax break flows to the apartment complex. Private entity is just an investor in the deal.
Let me try to explain this.
This is our CFO.
Okay. Good afternoon. When you create a partnership, you have two components, a limited partner and us. The limited partner is the investor, they own 99.9% of the ownership, and we have the rest, small portion. As long as they are on the property for 15 years, generally speaking, they're on it, then we have the right to buy them out. That's how that works. The reason we have this, each property is separate, because each investor is different. We cannot make them have any relationship with the agency as a whole. So for that particular partnership, it could be one investor. The next partnership could be a different investor. So that's why, we have 60 of those now, because we closed 60 properties in the last six years. So that's how the relationship works. The partnership is true, that the land is owned to the limited partner, our partnership, so that we can have the tax exemption for that property.
And when you say, "So that we can have the tax exemption for that property," who is "we"?
The partnership.
And the partnership is comprised of?
The limited partner and us.
And who's "us"? I'm sorry, when you say "us"?
It'd be an affiliate of whom. That's what the affiliate connection in that MOU relates to, a new one which we will create for that particular partnership.
And who is the other one?
Will be the limited partner. We haven't, we don't know who this is going to be, because sometime in the future, if we are awarded the tax credit, we go out and solicit investors to come into this partnership. So it could be any investor who does tax credits, and typically how it works is, we put out an RFP, they propose it, we review them, and sometimes we get, what, dollar for dollar, and sometimes we get 90 cents for the dollar, sometimes 79 cents for the dollar. That's how tax credits are purchased. We are getting that much money into the property as our investment into the deal. The good thing about this is, when the limited partner leaves, we don't have to repay any of the tax credits. That's why these are attractive investment portfolio for us.
I guess, I don't feel like we've had a discussion about these public facility corporations, and I know that there's been issues in other parts of the state. For example, Austin, I don't think allows them anymore, because there were some issues with them. And I don't think I feel that I understand- with them, and I, I don't think I feel that I understand well enough how they work. I'm wondering if maybe this is something that we could go into executive session to get some advice from the County Attorney's Office, to understand exactly how they work.
Yeah, we can, we can always go into executive session to review the specific provision, but any policy discussions, of course, would have to take place outside. So, so that's, that, if that's, if that's the will of the court, it's up to the court how you would like to proceed. And, so I don't know if you had any other issues that you wanted to raise.
That was my, my primary question.
There's, the cost of construction for government is very, very high. In, in the city, we used to have things called pilot, when you had public housing, traditional public housing. That money that we used was all converted into the construction. Same thing is happening here. The, the loss of taxes that you're seeing are going into the construction to compensate for the difference of the cost of what we have. That's why when we do all these things, it, a lot of times costs us more money than we ever receive out of the deal. That's why when you talk about 20% AMI, 30% AMI, or 20% or 30% AMI, the, the, the risk is so great, depending upon what it is, and, and how you structure these deals. Same thing is happening here. An investor comes in and they give us money, and then they exit the deal. And then what you have to do is you have to refinance it at year 10 or year 15 in order to try to bring more money in, in order to keep these things going. These things are very, very complicated. And I, I mean, what I'm trying to say is, is you're not losing anything, you're, you're gaining overall with, with this type of, of structure. Because the investors come and they get, they get their benefit for the first 10 years, and then, and then they exit. That leaves us with this particular asset. And that asset is then maintained for the next 40, 30 years, 40 years from inception, at the same limiting factor of the AMIs and regulatory structure created by TDHCA. So you get 40 years of, of that type of, of AMI, AMI structure that you've been looking for. So, I mean, it, it is a complicated structure, don't get me wrong. But the, the benefit that you're getting is a locked-in benefit for 40 years of knowing that those families that, that we start housing at that AMI are housed for the next 40 years. So you're talking about multiple generations.
I think it's, again, a good time to, to ask if, you know, if the court would be willing to just look at, you know, this limited MOU with this first project, so we can have some real-world experience that can help us answer and become more familiar with some of these questions that are going on. I think it's a good faith effort on our behalf to let Home know that we're willing to, to move forward with some of these things, but also it would provide us with some, I think, more and better information.
I would just say, though, what, what is the difference? Because you already have 20 years of experience of tax credits being built in the county. You have Bobby Bowling, you've got Ike Monte producing tax credits right now in the county. What we're producing isn't public housing. A lot of what you asked for regarding that very low AMI, and we, we showed you the information when you asked us, what's the percentage of people that are extreme low AMI? 80% of the families, 80% of the 40,000 people that we house are below 30% of AMI. And of that, I would say, half of those families are below 10% of AMI. That's public housing. That's the public housing structure. That's not this. This is a, this is a, a traditional tax credit property that you already have experience with, that already works very, very well. I mean, with what you have right now in the county, I would say you're well-served by the developers and what they're, what they're providing right now. We're doing something similar to that. This is something that's not public housing. This is, this is a traditional tax credit property that you're already familiar with. So I don't understand, I mean, other than us being a new developer, why, why we would, we would limit it to, to that? Because you've got to realize, I mean, as I look at this whole thing altogether, I'm trying to put together a deal, knowing that I'm a government entity, that costs, it costs a lot more for me to put something like this together than a traditional developer, right? The, the way we have to go out and do procurement, the way we, the, the costs that we have with everything, it's a very, very difficult thing to do. So when, when I came to you initially, and I was like, hey, listen, with the vouchers, you get this great gain, it gives us something that we can say, okay, we can, we can make sure that we make this, that this thing works financially, and in the end, it's a win-win for everybody. And that's what I'm trying to get to. I'm trying to get to this win-win, and I, and that's why I've been kind of beating my head against the wall, especially since, you know, we started these negotiations, because I think what you're all receiving with the opportunity for vouchers is massive. Possibility of $5 to $7 million every year in deep affordable housing in the county is a huge gain for the county. And I think us having the opportunity to come in, to get that $13 million, to build more affordable housing in the county, that we know will have at least 7.5% of extreme low-income housing, is also a gain for the county, and a gain for us for what we believe is our mission. Our mission is to house 80% or lower of AMI. It's not just the extreme poverty. There's a lot of people who are rent burdened at 60%, at 70%, at 40%. It's not just, hey, let's just house only poor people and put them all in one location, because we know that that doesn't work. You want the strata, you want that opportunity. And, and that's why, as we, we sit here before you, we see this as a great win-win between the county and us, to say going forward, we know we're going to do this, we're going to be here with you, year after year, and that you've got hundreds of families that now that are housed in the county that you're not going to have right now because of the jurisdictional limits. That's, that's all we're trying to do. And, and we, we just ask that you don't, you look at our track record, we're 85 years old. We're older than the Bowlings or the Monties of the world. We've got 85 years of track record. You've got 40,000 of the people right now that are your voting constituents, living with you, that you can talk to about the quality of what we provide. We are a known commodity. We are transparent. We have public meetings like you. We have public meetings on every single development we build. We are at the last minute. This is it. You're talking January 3rd. I haven't found land yet. I don't even know if you've even said yes. I've already, I've already employed all kinds of people to put this together. I've tried to hire a developer to help me. Guys, I'm at my wits' end of trying to save this $13 million. I'm, I'm in a tough spot, and I think what you have before you is more than enough in order to go forward. It's what we agreed to in the last time we were sitting here. You have a massive win ahead of you.
I'm not saying to give up the $13 million, Jerry. Did you hear what I just said? I didn't, I didn't say anything about giving up the $13 million.
I lose, I lose the ability to put the vouchers on the deal. That's the problem, Mr. Stout. The problem is financially, these deals are so thin, they are so thin, that if I can't try to put it on, being a government entity, I'm, I'm having a problem making it work. I mean, you're asking me to try to do something that is much more risky than if I had the vouchers in order to layer it upon this type of financial transaction.
But I'm, I'm not saying to, I'm not saying leave the vouchers out right now either. I, I think of what I was suggesting was, the voucher's in the limited MOU now, and then we can, we can look into later whether we, whether we want to, you know, we can see the real-world, I guess, effect of this, and, and then at a, at a later point, maybe in a year from now, I don't know when, then we can, then we can discuss after we're much more informed, because I still feel like we're not fully informed. You know, I don't understand completely, I don't know how anybody else can understand completely, you know, what, what we're getting ourselves into, and, and making sure that, you know, because again, I mean, the, it's, it's just, you know, the, the, the issue with the oversight is something that I think we need to delve into a little bit more. And I, I understand the, the need for, for this now, and that's what I'm saying, well, let's do the limited MOU now, and, and the vouchers, and then step back and, and take a little deeper dive into what the rest of, you know, this, you know, larger MOU, master plan MOU, whatever you want to call it, could be, and whether or not we really, we really want to have, have that oversight that we're asking for or not.
So you've got veto power of anything that's in competition with the local Housing Authority in the county, right? You have that. Anything that could potentially step on the toes of your county Housing Authority, you've got veto power over.
But for me, that's, I, I mean, I explained earlier, that's not, not completely what is the issue for me. It's not just, you know, being in competition with the county Housing Authority, but it's also the issue, the, the issue of just wanting to, to understand what, what is going on in the county when you have a public service that, that is setting up shop and doing things out in the county. Which is why, again, I asked, you know, why I was very strong advocate for, in the merger, asking for some type of oversight on behalf of the county when, when that was, when that discussion was taking place. And it has to do, again, I mean, we don't have zoning authority, right? We don't have zoning authority. And, and this gives us an opportunity to have some type of authority over what is, is happening in unincorporated areas of the county. And, you know, that's, that's, that's another part of it for me.
Okay, so.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to, to, to move forward with a limited MOU, to, to work on this project, and then, and then come back at a later date to, to discuss a, a larger master MOU, so we can work in good faith with, with, with Home, show them that we're, that we're willing to, to go for this project, make sure we don't lose out on the $13 million or $14 million, and then, and then it gives us the opportunity to, to inform ourselves a little bit better.
Brown, what's your, what are your barriers and things that you need to?
So, my, my only point is, and I'm going to go back to it, is, one, I mean, if it's just a one-off ETJ opportunity to do a 9%, I don't get the vouchers. And that, to me, I need to have in order to know that this deal's going to work. That's how we've done it in every single tax credit deal, we've leveraged it with, with the vouchers. That's, that's the benefit the Housing Authority has, and it gives you, I mean, probably that AMI that you, that you're probably trying to, trying to tackle. The, the chagrin that I have with this is, is that I want.
I want the vouchers included. I may, I may not have included that in the motion, but.
I, I know, the, the issue I have is the, the fact that there's a limiting factor saying that it's, this is now broadened to anything that we want to do. Wherein now, anything that we'd ever want to do is, is, having come before you, which, which.
It hasn't been decided yet. It hasn't been decided yet. We're, I'm just saying we want to step, I'm, I'm saying, let's look at, let's do this MOU, limited MOU, including the vouchers, and then give us the opportunity to, to inform ourselves a little bit better when it comes to, when it comes to the other issues. And, I mean, that, I, I'm not making the motion to, to, to do what you're saying, Jerry, right now, and, and say, we want complete oversight over everything at this point. I'm just saying, let's move forward in good faith with this project, with, with the limited MOU, including the vouchers, and then later on, we can have a, a larger discussion, because I think it, it merits a, a larger discussion.
Commissioner Stout, can I ask a clarifying question? When you say "and vouchers," do you mean voucher authority? Because that was the concern that I spoke about on November 6th, is I have projects in the county now that don't have access to Home and HSEP's vouchers, and I would like to have that authority to also have access to their vouchers, not just for his specific tax credit project. But again, like I presented to you guys in email, there's not enough vouchers at your county Housing Authority to serve the needs of 150,000 people living outside the city of El Paso, so.
So yes, I, okay, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bowling, before you sit down, I had one question that I wanted to ask you, if I may, really quickly. So in your tax-exempt.
Mine are not tax-exempt.
Or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, your tax credit.
Yes.
Projects, are they tax-exempt? Or would the ones we're talking about through Home only be tax-exempt because they're affiliated with Home?
So, there's actually, I'm not a lawyer, but I follow these case law things, and a limited partnership that's formed for tax credit purposes, that has private investors, does not fall under the statute of a government-owned and government-exempt-from-ad-valorem taxes entity.
So then this project that Home is proposing to be built will not be a tax-exempt property?
Not at, it's, not at, it's inception, absolutely not. And no tax credit project in Texas at its inception, unless it's 100% owned by a public housing authority without an investor, and there aren't any of those, would be exempt.
Okay, so I just want to be completely clear. This project that we're talking about, potentially doing a limited MOU, as Commissioner Stout has suggested, and I think is a good idea, is not going to be a tax, a property tax-exempt project, because it's not completely owned by Home or Home's affiliate.
I would disagree with Mr. Bowling.
Okay.
Microphone, please. Microphone, microphone.
Can you get on the mic, please, so we can hear you? Thanks.
It would be 100% exempt, or it would be highly reduced.
Okay, so I guess that's an issue that we also have not spoken about. So we've heard about the $15 million that we might lose on, if we don't jump on this opportunity, but we haven't really looked at, wouldn't it be more beneficial for us if, like, Mr. Bowling built a tax credit property, because then it's not tax-exempt, than having Home build these tax credit properties, because they are, I mean, the county's going to be losing on our property taxes, the more that Home builds as opposed to Mr. Bowling?
Oh, crap. 15% or 25% on different? We pay a reduced tax rate on most of our tax credit projects, but.
Too. So tax credit projects are not, they're not the same market value as a regular apartment complex, right? So all of us are not paying, like, like, I'm not paying the per, I have some market apartment complexes. They pay a lot more in property taxes than a tax credit unit pays, because a tax credit unit is burdened by a land use restriction agreement. It doesn't have the same market value as a, as one that's unencumbered by such an instrument, right? So we all have some, there's a formula that the CAD uses, and we're all on the same formula. It's not specific to HSEP, it's specific to tax credit developments. We all pay taxes, though. Now, it's not, you can, you can look at it like it's reduced. I don't think it's reduced. It's the, it's the, the exact market value of a tax credit development is somewhere between 25 and 50% of a market apartment complex. So it's not, and if I could just address Commissioner Holguin, some of the stuff that was happening in San Antonio, those weren't tax credit developments at all.
I mentioned Austin, not San Antonio.
Austin, Houston, San Antonio, all of these, all of these big cities, Dallas, too. The one that I saw was in the San Antonio Express-News, but they're all doing this, and they're going before their private finance corporation, like the El Paso Housing Finance Corporation. And they're getting them to own the property, and they're getting a tax exemption that way. That's not what we're doing in El Paso. No one's doing that. I think a private developer did that, I, I think it's called the, it's not called the Schuster House, or what's that? There's, there's one development that the El Paso Housing Finance Corporation did, but that's not a tax credit deal, and that's a totally, that's a different, I don't support that. I don't think that's good public policy. And there's probably going to be a statute in the next session that addresses that and takes that privilege back away. But just to clarify, like, those developments, those are not El Paso, and those are not tax credit developments, those, those tax-exempt PFC things.
Well, that, that's what my point is, though, is that I don't think we've had any discussion about that, and much less have any understanding of that. So I mean, we've talked about the money that's coming in, the 15 million or whatever that we don't want to lose out on, but if, I mean, there's also this tax-exempt property values, I mean, the, the property taxes issue, that I, I know I don't understand exactly how it fits in to PFCs, other than what I've read, that there's other jurisdictions that have issues, just like you mentioned. But that's my point. I don't think that we've had that discussion or have that understanding.
So, like, I reached out to Commissioners Court, I think, back in February on this. Set a deadline at this point. So these are all, I mean, this is, like Commissioner Stout said, I'm not going to be able to make you understand this program today. It's taken me years and decades to really understand all the nuances. It's incredibly complex, this program, it has many different facets and tenets. What is before you, though, and, you know, with all due respect, you voted against this issue on November 6th, is to allow HSEP Home to expand its jurisdiction into the unincorporated area, to do a tax credit development, and expand their voucher authority.
And that's why I think Commissioner Stout's idea of doing the MOU for this one project is a good idea, because that allows us the time to finish exploring these other issues that we have. I mean, that's why I would agree with Commissioner Stout.
So, no, I would, so, we have a motion on the table for what I understand, if I could just reiterate, so that would take care of, if that's the direction of the court, the first issue that I needed some clarification on, I need a consensus from the court at this point, so that I, if we're going to go forward with the, with the, the motion that you all, there's a consensus with the alternate to, to delete the language regarding the 20% of individuals at or below 30% AMFI, and to accept the proposed language, which is Home will provide per TDHCA application requirements, the number of units that will be for individuals in the lowest income levels for each project. Is there a consensus from the court on that point? I see Commissioner Stout shaking his head.
I heard the maximum, what caught my ear was the maximum allowable.
Yes.
Would that work?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I didn't hear you.
The maximum allowable.
Yes, that's the language that I heard.
Right.
Okay, so, Home will provide the maximum of allowable, per TDAHCA application requirements, the number of units that will be for individuals in the lowest income levels for each project. Is that what the court, consensus of the court? I see three shaking their heads, Commissioner Holguin, Commissioner Leon, and Commissioner Stott. So, there's a motion on the table. So, the motion on the table-
Yes. But, but, I'm not so much agreeing with the motion, I'm agreeing with the maximum allowable.
Yes, so I hear the consensus on the alternative language, as I just mentioned, right? So, the motion on the table for Commissioner Stott, we haven't had a full vote, but I just want to make sure that we capture what this means, at least with the backup today, and we know what the court's intent is moving forward. Again, if it's the will, it would be to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the interlocal agreement between Home and EP County regarding Home operation in the county area with the following edited language and pertinent changes to reflect the court's intent, as was discussed today, in the interlocal agreement. And so, the way I heard the court, or what Commissioner Stott is proposing is, Commissioner Stott, not the court, Commissioner Stott, is the Home authorization to operate in county area shall narrow, shall be narrowly drawn to reflect engagement in only a one-time tax credit project whose application is due March 2022. Home is not authorized to operate in EP County for any other projects. All references that imply Home authorization to operate for any and all other projects shall be deleted in the draft agreement to reflect the intention of the Commissioner's Court to authorize operation for the one-time tax credit project, again, whose application is due March 2022. Language regarding EP County Commissioner's Court veto authority over the one-time tax credit project shall remain the same in the draft interlocal agreement, so that's currently as proposed. And then also, to reflect the change in the language, as was discussed earlier regarding, if I could just read that in, just to make sure we got that correct, Home will provide the maximum allowable, per TDAHCA's application requirements, the number of units that will be for individuals in the lowest income levels for each project. As I also heard from Commissioner Stott, it's your intent to keep in there as well the voucher language. So, the voucher language, it's already in your draft interlocal agreement, which provides that Home and EPSHA have, both have concurrent jurisdictions to administer vouchers in the county area. Home shall administer assistance for families and be responsible for its vouchers in its original statutory area of operation and the county area, and EPSHA shall administer assistance and be responsible for its vouchers in its original statutory area of operation. That would be the motion.
Because it sounds like we've-
We have to, well, it's not, well, the first thing is, we have to, this is a new concept. We're facing a deadline. We'd have to negotiate an MOU while we're trying to pursue a project. It'd be very, it'd be very difficult. We would respectfully ask the court to reject Commissioner Stott's proposal to just limit it to this one project, and just stick with the MOU that was approved. The concept of expanding the jurisdiction was approved by a vote of 3 to 2 at your November 6th or November 8th meeting. And we would, we negotiated this MOU in line with that vote. And we would, we would therefore ask you to approve the MOU with the clarifications discussed today, on the two points that were discussed today, which was the, going with our language on the maximum feasible, and if you all had some kind of notice requirement on other projects, then I think that would probably be acceptable to the Housing Authority.
And Christina, something that was really important to me was that we've already agreed on something, and then, I hope that coming here, we're not disagreeing on-
Sure, just to remind the court what you all agreed to for the resolutions, the exact language in the resolutions was subject to the negotiation approval of an interlocal agreement that provides veto approval to the court prior to the submission of a final application for the tax credit of a project located in the county area, or provided that the resolution is only authorized for any new project submitted on or before January 1st, 2024. So, that was what the court's action was on November the 8th, when we initially came in here.
Which is exactly what we're doing.
That we're conditioning on in our local-
That action was subject to our approval of what we're doing today, so-
We haven't already agreed to anything. So, I'm gonna go ahead and second Commissioner Stott's motion, because I don't think we had a second yet.
And Christina-
And again, so we, yes, sir.
Just one more question. With what you just said-
Yes, sir.
We basically had agreed on the vouchers, is that what that means?
Yes, sir. So, that language was already provided in the interlocal agreement. Home is comfortable with that. I will add, I guess, just based on Mr. Blumenfeld's comments today, we have the court's action and how it wants to go forward with the interlocal agreement, does not necessarily mean that we have a meeting of the minds on the other end. So, this could either go forward as today as proposed. I don't know what Home will be amenable to. I think they feel like they still have to need, they need to review it, but-
I mean, we agree what you passed, which was, "We will come to you on every single tax credit. You have veto on every single tax credit. Our vouchers go out in the county." And that was what we brought forward, and that's what you voted on.
But I don't think we limited it to just the tax credit properties. We never had that discussion.
It did. In fact, if you come up, read the language again. Read the language again.
...of a final application for a tax credit of a project located in the county area, or provided that the resolution is only authorized, excuse me, only authorized for any new project submitted on or before January 1st. Now, key to that is, we did not have the definition of projects at this time. It is defined in your interlocal agreement, and that's why it's brought to your attention in terms of projects, is only meaning tax credit-only projects. It's just in full transparency to the court that that's what the purpose of the interlocal agreement was for, as well as to flush this out. Again, it's up to the court. You can authorize everything, or authorize just one item, so.
I took this to my board, and I read that language, and this is what they agreed to. They agreed to what I'm espousing to you at this time. And, I mean, all we want to do is build, all we want to do is get our vouchers out into your county. We want to make sure that we're good neighbors, and I think we're doing just that. And I think, you know, with what we agreed to last time, I think that that was a fair deal. And I would respectfully ask that that be the deal that's voted on today, the language that's before you today, which isn't, because if you vote for the vouchers, and then you turn around and say, "Hey, later, we don't want to do that," I can't undo the vouchers once they're in the county. I mean, it, I don't understand, I don't think you understand the mess that this would create from a regulatory process. I mean, you're not just dealing with just us, you're dealing with HUD, you're dealing with families. And, I mean, so, that's why, when I say, "What are we doing exactly?", clearly, because these vouchers, which is one half of this book, I'd check to probably say, it's probably seven eighths of this book, I mean, we can't get this thing wrong. And so, I would like the vouchers to go. I would like approval for every single tax credit, so that we're not in competition, which was a lot of what we were talking about. We will do as much as we can for the extremely low-income families, as much as we can, with the vouchers out there. I think we can do a lot of great stuff that'll make you very, very happy. I respectfully ask a vote on that, and not on Mr. Stott's motion, and I ask that that be rejected at this time. Thank you.
To clarify, Christina-
We have a motion and a second on the table, so-
Just to clarify, what's the option? Let's say we reject this.
Yes, sir.
What's the option, just so I can be clear?
If you reject in terms of the motion that was made on the table from Commissioner Court, excuse me, from, yes, from Commissioner Stott, regarding just limiting it to a one-time tax credit project, there's no agreement, there's no interlocal agreement. So, the resolutions were conditioned on that, so the motion would fail if there's not a vote, a majority vote on that. There could be a second motion, if the court would like to make it, or a member of the court would like to make it. I don't believe Commissioner Robinson, Commissioner Robinson, are you on the line?
We're trying to get him back on. He did message me through his staff that he wants to vote.
He would like to vote on this one.
I'm trying to get him back on.
Okay, okay. So, that's where we would be left with, Judge.
If this is rejected, then we would have a motion, sort of, based on-
If there's, we have a motion and a second. There's four of you, depending on how the vote would go, it could be passed. If it doesn't, if there's two of you that go the other way, the motion fails, Judge.
So, the, I mean, I don't understand why there's opposition, but, you know, because the MOU would be the same, basically, except for the narrowing of the application, and we're just, we're just saying, listen, we know that, we know that there's a tight timeline for this project. This has been kind of like the carrot that's been dangled in front of our faces, saying, "You know what? You need to do this, or we don't get this carrot." And, but, I still, I think, because of what was brought up, because it wasn't, it wasn't as transparent, I think the last time we talked about it, it wasn't made clear that this was only in regards to tax, tax credit projects, right? And so, now that that's made clear, I think that, again, we need to have a larger policy discussion as a policymaking board, as to whether we, we think that it's a good idea to allow any level of unfettered development without any oversight from the county to occur in the unincorporated areas.
If our proposal would be that if Commissioner Stott's proposal was not accepted and did not pass, that someone else would make a motion to enact the MOU as discussed today in today's session, modifying the definition of project, so we'll give notice of any project, and to reduce the language on the 20% AMI. We would, we would want someone to propose the MOU that we negotiated and we drafted.
Well, I think first, though, we already have a motion and a second, so I think we need to, before we start talking about other motions, I think we need to dispose of this matter.
Well, it is, but I just want to know, because Commissioner Stott is making it sound like nothing's gonna happen if we create that, but they're saying, yes, it will. And so, I want to know why that difference is. How are we limiting you in such a way with his motion? And that's what I want to understand, you know, what are those limitations? Because, like I said earlier, it looks like we agreed on something, and, on a 3 to 2 vote, but now you're trying to figure a way how to make it more accessible to the 2 than the 3. That's my impression. We agreed on something, and now we're saying, well, you know, we're gonna tighten all these bolts, because we want to get back to where we were. And I disagree. I think that we already had a vote that was much more open, and more accessible, that we agreed on, but now the 2 are saying, "No, you know what? Let's tighten it, because we don't really like the fact that we got a 3-2 vote." And that's my impression, and maybe I'm wrong, but I feel very, very uncomfortable that we agree on something, and then we now, how do we tighten it enough to where we disagreed, and we're back to a disadvantage on the 3-2 vote?
Judge-
That's my-
Can I, can I respond to that?
Sure.
So, were you aware of the information that was provided to us today by our attorneys that, were you of a complete understanding that this, this decision that we're gonna make today was not only involving tax-exempt projects? Were you aware that somebody in the attorney's office, or somebody in Jerry's office, or anybody else advised you that that was the case? That this was going to be a blanket for every single project, not just involving the tax-exempt projects?
I understood it, because I know what they do in El Paso, and I understood how they manage things. And so, I wasn't never thinking they'd be limited to this, but that if something else came up, they'd come up and tell us, "Hey, we've got this other project, and we'd like to talk to you about it." And not necessarily that I could reject it or veto it, but because I'm going on basis on a trust, not on that they're gonna do something wrong to us, and, you know, that there's something wrong, I gotta stop them, I gotta make sure. I didn't focus that way, because I know enough about housing. I was the interim director there in our county housing, and everything that they're trying to do are things that we should have done. And I'm also really concerned that we've had them for four years, we've never asked anything of them, Commissioner Stott, we've never, we've never directed them, and then all of a sudden, we're trying to direct another organization when we didn't even do it ourselves. And so, I don't feel comfortable that for four years, well, five, because when I was there was before I started, and, you know, we could do whatever we want to, and we would promise everything, never limit them, and there they are, 80 units and limited vouchers. And now, someone comes to the table, and all of a sudden, we're going to this extreme of making sure that we limit everything, and we act as if we were, we did that on our own, and we never did that, Commissioner. We allowed so many things, and look at what happened. We're still four years later with 80 units. So, here's a group that's trying to do something, and I could sit here and figure out 1,000 reasons why they shouldn't, but I really believe that the evidence, the proof of the pudding is what they've done in El Paso, in the city, and I would feel so much comfortable knowing that our county counterparts have those same opportunities. I've never seen any, anything that would alarm me, that would say, you know, they're gonna do certain things that, I've never seen that. I mean, I've had to study them as well, because I was trying to understand my role as the interim, and, you know, I couldn't see anything but wanting to do something for the constituents. So, I, maybe I wasn't debriefed exactly, but I knew that they have to function, and I know there's other dimensions that they have to do to make this one work. It's not an isolated thing without having to do other things, getting vouchers, getting more development going, so that you could use the vouchers appropriately. So, that's my, my focus is that we're being extremely, all of a sudden, we're being extremely cautious and limiting when we had our own county housing authority, and we didn't do it. And I don't feel comfortable about that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just, it bothers me that we're trying to characterize either, you know, the opposition to this as, "We don't like what, you know, how HACEP has run their organization," or that we don't believe that there should be other housing available in the unincorporated areas. I think everybody on this court believes that Home, or HACEP Home, has done a great job, and I think everybody on this court believes that there should be additional housing provided, and it's, and we don't have a problem with HACEP doing it, or Home doing it. And I understand what you're, what you're saying about our county housing authority, you know, they have not had the capacity to do something like this, and hopefully, they'll be able to soon. And, but, I also, just on, you know, a policy level, believe that when these types of operations are gonna take place, that there should be some type of accountability to the county. I don't know, I don't remember if you were on the court when we had the conversation about the merger, but, but, you know, for me, it was, it was the same thing, you know, they wanted to merge, but then the county was not gonna have any say-so into where, or when, or what, or how things were gonna be taking place. And I think that that's something that we, if we have the opportunity to have that authority, we should strive to get that authority. Because, you know, I mean, I've heard so many times county leaders, and not just here, but in other areas, talking about how we are so limited when it comes to our authority to make those decisions, or to be involved in that decision-making process. And it seems to me that we would be doing ourselves a disservice, and our, you know, our constituency a disservice by giving up, or not fighting, or not pushing for that type of, for that type of authority when we have the opportunity on the table.
Well, all I can say, Commissioner, is that I don't like to have, you know, governance for governance sake, because I don't govern other organizations, and they blossom. And so, me governing doesn't, we could have governed the county, we didn't. But what I'm saying is, we don't govern some other organizations that are extremely successful, and because we don't govern them, puts us at a disadvantage. So, I understand from, maybe I'm looking from a business perspective, but sometimes the governance really creates a lot of barriers in their ability to move fast, and at the end of the day, I'm only concerned that we have better housing in the rural areas, at the end of the day. And I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything to limit someone ambitiously trying to do something that they've done, and we've seen it, there's proof of the pudding, that I want to bring it into the rural areas. I don't think there's anything wrong with- I don't think there's anything wrong with, with allowing that and not being so restrictive that, that I make sure that I'm, I'm more concerned about me able to govern than the constituents getting what they need to get. And I think in El Paso, they've gotten quite a bit. I, I mean, I've seen...
Judge, if I may? I'm sorry, I, I thought you were done.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just wanted to say that I think we're in agreement with you. We want to see more opportunities for low-income housing in the county. Nobody is disputing that. But I, I think that there are some questions and concerns that were brought up. Commissioner Leon brought up some very valid questions and concerns at the beginning of discussion. Commissioner Stout did the same. I've done the same. And, and so, I think that there's still room for us to learn more about all of, how all of these projects work. But at the same time, we want to maintain a balance, and we don't want to lose this particular opportunity that has an upcoming deadline. And again, I'm just wanting to reiterate, I think that's why Commissioner Stout's proposal is a good one. It'll give us an opportunity to not lose this funding, to not lose this opportunity to provide more housing in the rural areas, but it will also give us a time to see how things work out, to, and that'll address Commissioner Leon's initial concerns, that will answer some of Commissioner Stout's questions, that will give us time to answer some of my questions, without losing this opportunity. So, again, I'm just reiterating, I think that that's the, where we can meet in the middle, and still allow this project to go forward, but also give us time before the next project comes before us to better understand some of these issues. So, with that, I'd, I'd like to call the questions, since we have a motion and a second.
Caesar?
Commissioner Holgin.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
I think by voting for this, what's on the table right now, we're tying Homes's hands, and thus damaging our most needy constituents out there. And I think that Mr. Bowling really answered a lot of the questions that I had, insofar as why I was a little reluctant at the beginning. So, my vote is no.
Commissioner Stout?
Yeah, I, I just feel, I just think it's obvious that we don't have enough information and enough understanding. I'm happy that the county judge had that level of understanding before we did, but, you know, this is new information, and it's, it's, I think, important. And we're not, we're not tying the hands of them, we're, we're, we're letting them go forward with the project that they need to go forward with. So, yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
I think probably only we need to have that discussion. But my vote would be...
Commissioner Robinson, we didn't hear you completely. Could you repeat your vote?
My, my vote was no.
Thank you, sir.
Judge Samaniego?
No.
Motion fails.
So, unless there's another motion, then this, I don't want to...
Can I propose another motion? And that was the original without, and, and you're, you're going to have to guide me through this, Christina.
Yes, sir.
The original one that allows them to go into the county with those vouchers.
Sure, sure. So, the, so, the draft agreement is reflective, if what I understand of the motion that you want to go with, which is to, so your motion for item 10 would be, it would be a motion to approve and authorize the interlocal agreement as provided in the backup with the following edited language. We would include the edited language that provides, just give me a second, I have my notes, would be that Home will provide the maximum, per TDHCH application requirements, the number of units that will be for individuals in the lowest income levels for each, excuse me, for each project. That would only be the only revision.
I think maximum allowable.
The maximum allowable, per TDHCA application requirement. Yes, sir. So, that would be the motion.
That's my motion.
There a second?
Second. So, so, just to be, just to clarify, this, this means that, that we're only, we're only talking about, or, I mean, we're talking about approving any, any, any type of, of construction, whether it's tax exempt or not?
So, the way that the interlocal is agreeing, agreement is written, is what I understand that Commissioner Leon wants to, to move forward with. Your only veto authority is over the tax credit projects, and that was as described at the, at the November 8th meeting. So, that's the motion. Any other projects that are not tax credit-based would not be brought before the court.
Go ahead, Caesar.
Commissioner Holgin?
No.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
No.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. You won't be disappointed, I promise. I promise. Thank you.
Judge, that concludes all of the items on our agenda today.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone that stayed around, our translators back there. Thank you very much, both of you, and wish everybody a great week. Thank you.
And to our, our county attorneys, Christina, and the whole team that helped out. I know it took a lot of hours to get this on paper.
Thank you, Judge. No, thank you, Commissioner Leon. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you. Betsy, did we have that meeting, or did, was, it's done? It was completed?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness. Not good?
No, it was good.
Oh.
This concludes today's meeting at 3:33 PM.